That is nice. It's technically my clocks.
Sometimes those for the moment surprise things are some of the best, you know?
Shall we?
Yes.
All right. Adrian N. Brightfelder, you are hereby directed to call a special session of the City Council to be held on Monday, September 20th at 5:00 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting work sessions on the Project Hope Quarterly Update and the Dubuque Regional Airport Master Plan.
Good evening, and welcome to a special session of the Dubuque City Council for September 20th, 2021. As a reminder to viewers and listeners, due to the nature of tonight's meeting topic, public input is not accepted. However, you may contact the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts. Attendance for the work session is as follows. Mayor Buell. All right, not hearing him, I'll move on. Mayor Protem Sprank.
Here.
Councilmembers Kavanaugh.
Here.
Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Rousell.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. I will now turn it over to Peter Supple of the Community Foundation.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council members and staff. My name is Peter Supple, and I'm the Economic Opportunity Coordinator for the Community Foundation of Greater Dubuque. Thank you for taking the time to hear our Project Hope Initiative update. We will cover our current and future work. Project Hope City Funding, your funding support is greatly appreciated. It allows us to provide staffing oversight while addressing complex social issues, and a lot of these issues have a lot to do with economic development. And these issues take resources and time. And how do we do that? With the Collective Impact Model. At the foundation, we're not direct service, but we play a role as the community collaborator and convener. We bring the professionals and providers together to work as one. There is something powerful about this process. Many providers focus on day-to-day operations, and we invite them to work as one, as a community. We ask our partners to, as you can see there, the five conditions of collective impact, we ask our partners to share a common vision and common goal, collect and share data, continuously communication, building trust, and to have a backbone support for these issues. And that's us at the Community Foundation. We are the backbone support of these five conditions. Here are a few of our priority initiatives. I will discuss the work with the Office of Shared Prosperity. And Alex Baum, our Director of Knowledge Management, will touch on MIT and the Youth Employment Coalition. Project Hope stands for helping our people excel, and we've been doing that for a number of years. Over the 18 months of research the city spent on the Equitable Poverty Reduction and Prevention Plan, here are just five examples of how Project Hope is helping with this work. And these were highlighted in that plan, and there are a few others. We're excited to work with Anderson and his team, and we've actually already started meeting with them, and we'll continue to do so. The Project Hope stakeholders meet on a monthly basis, and I should say these stakeholders have a lot of mission and passion around economic development. Anderson will be joining our Project Hope stakeholders on a monthly basis, and this program, the Shared Prosperity and Neighborhood Support, will be an agenda topic and priority moving forward. A lot of our work and the stakeholders' work align with this program, so it fits perfectly. Anderson mentioned he didn't want to reinvent the wheel when it comes to community members' meeting and providers' meeting, so he will be joining us, and we're super excited for that. At this time, I'll ask Alex Baum to come up to touch on MIT and the Youth Employment Coalition.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Alex Baum. I'm the Knowledge Management Director at the Community Foundation. And for the past four years, we've been partnering with MIT and the Sloan School of Management to have graduate students come here to Dubuque and do in-depth research that we wouldn't be able to conduct on our own on workforce development issues.
Enter your access code followed by the pound or hash sign.
Here, one second. So each year, the MIT graduate students come and do a specific amount of research.
Three, three, seven, six, six, one, one, eight, one, one.
Do you want me to push through?
Please re-enter your access code followed by the pound or hash sign.
It had to be incorrect, though, didn't it?
So each year, the students.
No digits.
Not laughing at you.
Very well timed.
Yes, it is, it is.
Be a thousand miles away and make that noise happen in a council meeting. It's impressive.
Each year, the students come in and look at a different aspect of workforce development and look at the different opportunities that are available here in Dubuque, as well as the different challenges and barriers that our residents face to getting workforce development. And a lot of their work is focused on those specifically living in poverty and facing barriers. This year in 2022, we've already had agreement for the MIT team to come in and help us with our Youth Employment Coalition, which is what I want to talk about next. So the Community Foundation is going to be doing some work with a lot of our partners in the region to launch a Youth Employment Coalition, which is a community impact collective focused on young people aged 16 to 24 from underserved communities to help them get a clear and direct pathway leading to family-sustaining careers. Now, first of all, when I say underserved communities, what I mean is communities of color, immigrants, LGBTQ+ communities, individuals with disabilities, formerly incarcerated individuals, anyone who faces systemic barriers to getting that education and skills training or to having access to high-interest, high-demand careers. We have been working, we will be working with a lot of our community partners, including NICC and GDDC, as well as community-based organizations and our CEO, our Business Leader Equity Working Group, in order to bring this together. So part of what this coalition will be doing is connecting those already impactful workforce development programs that we have in Dubuque, such as Opportunity Dubuque and the Success Model at NICC, and connecting them with building capacity within underserved communities, as well as collaborating with those businesses who are really focused on equity. We are very excited about this and being able to leverage new resources that we're bringing into the community to be innovative and to try to deal with some of those most pressing and difficult challenges that right now we're facing in getting underserved community members into that workforce pipeline so that they can have good, sustainable jobs here in Dubuque. I'll turn it back over to Peter to talk on the other parts of Project Hope.
Thank you, Alex. And I will add to what Alex was talking about with the MIT students. It's such a great opportunity, not only for those students, but for us, to get fresh eyes on some, you know, issues that we're in the weeds on. And I think one of the overwhelming themes.
It could be paused for about 30 seconds. We'll get that.
Good to go. All right. So what I was saying is that when the MIT students come in and look at these systemic barriers, there's just a fresh eyes on our community. And one of the overwhelmingly themes of the last four years, and this should make us all feel good, is that Dubuque is uniquely positioned to make an impact. We're not the city of Chicago. We're not LA County. The need is big enough, but we're such a smaller area that the impact can be felt. And so that's something that I keep in mind when we work on brain health or economic development, youth, youth employment, et cetera. So I just wanted to throw that out there. I'm going to briefly highlight some other initiatives in Project Hope. Brain Health, we're going to continue to lead and be the backbone organization for the brain health work in our community. On a monthly, on a monthly basis, we're meeting on adult and children's brain health. And one of our priorities going forward in the next 12 months or so will be involving the minority community and also persons with lived experiences with brain health. And I think you'll see during COVID, substance use, alcoholism, et cetera, plus brain health, that's a disaster. So we're getting our providers ready to have those conversations. Community Organizations Active in Disaster Coed. Prior to COVID, this initiative was to help with natural disasters, something like flooding or tornadoes. We helped communities with this, but once COVID hit, we pivoted, and it essentially became a COVID fund. Over $1.7 million were donated to nonprofits in need in our region. And kind of the four focus areas that we covered or that rose to the top were food, shelter, education, and just overall COVID expenses, masks, cleaning supplies for the schools, childcare, you name it. So over $1.7 million since COVID started with this fund. And we couldn't, that couldn't be done without our partners and collaboration in the community. The Volunteer Income Tax Assistant, VITA. This, this program is headed by HACAP, and we're happy to support this, this initiative again for another year. This is essentially for individuals in our area to get their taxes done for free. And in such a difficult COVID year, individuals, clients could not come into HACAP's building. They had a hard time finding volunteers, training volunteers. But we're happy to say that 758 returns in the Dubuque area, and a number of them were returned from 2018, 19, and 20, et cetera. And then obviously with the federal assistance, COVID relief, that was also a hiccup, you could say, in our tax return. So again, kudos to HACAP. And then also our Dubuque College Access Network, DCAN. And I'm going to invite Donna Lowen to come up here. Donna's our DCAN coordinator, and she's going to share some news on that.
Thank you, Peter. Greetings, City Council, and thank you for your support for Project Hope. We fall into that category and for inviting this update on DCAN. So since fiscal year 2016, the Community Foundation of Greater Dubuque has provided backbone support for Dubuque's College Access Network. And DCAN is in its final year of funding in this fiscal year 2022 through the Iowa College Aid Commission's LCAN, Local College Access Network Grant Series. The network is a multi-sector partnership, highly engaged in increasing high school graduates' access to and attainment of post-secondary education and training. All of this in accord or parallel to the work of the Future Ready Iowa Initiative, supporting employer innovation, registered apprenticeships, and other work-based learning options. So program success, how does that, how is that ensured? Well, of course, the strong partnerships that exist following the same collective impact model that Peter referenced. The partnerships link folks in the K-12 educational system, higher education, businesses, workforce entities, City of Dubuque, and other governmental entities, and a host of community-based organizations. We have regular updates from all of the partners at monthly meetings focused on priority areas. Our data dashboard is regularly updated, and we use that data to guide decisions. We work on priorities of career and college readiness, issues of social, financial, and academic barriers, and also enrollment in post-secondary training, issues like increasing FAFSA completion rates because that's one of the strongest indicators of post-secondary, you know, following through on one's post-secondary plan, academic support to assure a good launch in one's post-secondary experiences, and so on. Ongoing efforts include attention to the fact that post-secondary planning needs to begin early. In our, all of our Dubuque area schools begins in middle school with exploratory courses and use of the Cooter Navigator, which is a system customized for each student, and providing an increasing number of high school opportunities to explore areas of interest and the career pathways associated to each. During the past year and a half of COVID, our DCAN network continued support, going virtual as everyone else did, providing, continuing to provide career and workplace information. We did lots of panel presentations for such groups as first-gen students, information on a variety of career pathways, actual workplace tours, and so on. In conjunction with the Dubuque Community School District's plan to afford a test prep opportunity for all juniors, last year, done for the first time and will happen again this spring, DCAN came together to provide test prep for those testing opportunities for a variety of post-secondary options, such as academic degree, degrees from four or two-year colleges, professional or technical certificates, occupational licenses, military training programs, et cetera. And so this year, in our final year of funding through Iowa College Aid, our focus is on sustainability planning. We want to assure that the connections that have been sort of nurtured and cultivated over the last many years between and among partners, that they remain strong, that our data collection continues and is even more public-facing, and that all students, ALL all students, have the information and support they need to explore options and realize the post-second, their post-secondary goals. With special attention, as you've heard referenced several times in this last 20, 25 minutes, the needs of our low-income, first-generation, and students of color in our community. And I'll step back because if you have questions, I think Peter will facilitate that. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Donna. And like she said, at this time, you know, we threw a lot at you in 20 minutes, but if any of you guys have any questions or concerns, feedback from our Project Hope update, we would welcome them.
Mr. Mayor Protem? Thank you. Could you tell me how many MIT students are involved in the cohort?
Sure. So every year, we get sent four students.
Four students.
Yep. And it is a, it's a semester-long class, and there's many students, and they get to basically choose what community they want to come visit. You know, we pitched them, and so we got four students who were very passionate. And in years probably previous, they got to visit Dubuque, they lived here, they did everything that we asked for them to do, and plus some, so four students.
And how do you make connections with these underserved populations? I know you talked about the partners that we have.
Yep.
Is there a process that they have? Because we'd love to make connections with these underserved folks, and if you have some secrets, we'd love to hear them.
Secret weapon's standing behind me. I don't know if Alex, he, he works with those populations on a daily basis, so I'll let him answer that.
Yeah, I mean, it's an excellent question, and part of what we're trying to do through the YEC, the Youth Employment Coalition Program, is actually build additional capacity within these organizations. Within different underserved communities, there are some very strong community-based partners, places like the Fountain of Youth, Multicultural Family Center, that I think that you all know very well. But within other communities that we have, there's really a lack of established organization and capacity, in my, in my belief at least. If you take, for example, our Marshallese population, a lot of the community is centered around church groups, a different kind of societal structures, but it comes down to the fact that when we make requests of these communities, we're relying very heavily on volunteer community leaders, people who are wonderful, who move mountains, but it's not part of their day job. They don't have the training, the resources, the capacity, and frankly, the power to be able to serve their community in the same way. So part of what we want to do in order to expand some of that community is, first of all, bring in additional individuals and give them a voice to shape the pathway of the work we're doing, to try to change our collective model so that it, it takes into account those power structures, right? If we have an immigrant community member and the head of the City Housing Department on the same committee, there's going to be an inherent power imbalance there. And we need to design in order to make sure that our community members can participate fully in what's going on. And then finally, we want to bring in additional resources in order to reach out to those community members, to help build capacity, resources, and really the ability for them to serve their community as they see fit. In, I've spent a lot of my time working with immigrant communities specifically, building some of those relationships, and yet despite how much relationships I've built with our Guatemalan Mayan community, our Latino-Latino-Latinx community, it is, we're always going to fall short unless people within that community can really serve and advocate for themselves.
And thank you for that answer. I guess my, a big mystery to me is it's such a transient population, transitory, a lot of moving. The schools have noted that they, some schools lose half their population, or there's trade of a lot of people. And who's speaking for those people who are always in transit? They're moving a lot. Is there a way that we can engage the needs that they have?
Again, an excellent question. I think a lot of that is only going to get worse because we've had a lot of challenges with affordable quality housing in our area. I think that's something everybody feels, but especially for those underserved communities, that can be a big issue. We have been working a lot with the, the school district, and actually with NICC, to do kind of creative, innovative programming in order to try to get additional help from within those communities. So an example I'll give you, we have a Guatemalan Mayan indigenous population here in Dubuque, a really fantastic population, but with a lot of unaccompanied minors who are pursuing special immigrant juvenile status, but really need a lot of additional help in school, largely because they come to Dubuque not speaking English, not even speaking Spanish, but speaking Mayan dialects like Isu and Keché. We need people in the school district who are able to help with that, but, but there's a huge dearth of that kind of skill within the United States. So we partnered with NICC and with the school district in order to, in order to get a volunteer, a mentor who is not volunteered, but who is paid for her time to get in there, working with these students, acting as both a guide and as a source of what you can achieve if you put in the dedication and the work to get that additional education. And as part of this program, we're also helping her try to get through NICC so she can get her high school equivalency, so that she can get her citizenship, and she can really move forward and progress on her own, and we can move to the next community member who we empower to help their own community.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Thank you.
Ms. Susan?
Yes, I have a question regarding the DCAN program. And thank you for putting all that time, energy, love, and attention into that group. And I wanted to know, you mentioned that the final year of funding was 2022. What is going to be your next step after that, and can we help?
Yes, we, we'll take all the help we can get. This year, our focus is on coming up with a plan of sustainability. You know, what balls do we need to keep in the air, and what will it take to keep them all rolling, and, and that sort of thing. We have representation from the, from the city in our, in our DCAN network. In fact, from, we have, we have upwards of 40 to 50 folks throughout, and it's going to take, you know, all of us to figure that out. It is not, you know, it is not without possibility that we might figure out a way to continue in some respect a coordinator role because even yours truly speaking, it has made such a difference in keeping things moving forward. But we will be sure to ask for, for help along the way and share our plan as it evolves. But thank you for the, for the compliment you paid. It really has been a great coming together of so many folks, many of whom I knew in, from my previous work in the schools. And I'm sure we're going to come up with a good plan for continuous improvement and sustainability, but that is our, the work before us, just starting a month or so ago when we were renewed for our new grant year.
And does this include the local universities, you know, University of Dubuque?
Yes, we have representation from Clark, Loris, UD, EMAAS, NICC. We have both Dubuque Community Schools and Holy Family System working together. We have, I could name all of them, but I think you get the drift.
I just know that first-generation college students is a very important priority for our local universities, on which I serve, one of them at the University of Dubuque. And I know that we are very proud for most of our population being first generation that does attend universities. So I would look forward to hearing more, both at their end and also from your end, about what we can do next.
Great. Just a little footnote to that. Last year, no, in, in March of 2020, before, before schools went virtual, the last in-person Career, Career Day event that was held at Hempstead, we had a panel of first-year, first-gen students representing all the area colleges up at Hempstead High School. I think it was one of the most engaging things we have done. We couldn't wait to do it again. Well, we haven't had that chance to, to bring it back, but those students, so close to the experience that they're talking about for the kids sitting in those seats, they're our freshmen through seniors that attend, but telling their story, the things that they worried about coming in, the things they didn't even know they should worry about coming in, et cetera, good stuff. And we're going to continue to, they're already talking. Apart from my input, they've already talked about the next Career Day having such a panel in both fronts.
Great. And then, do these students have a chance to get into your YEC Coalition to basically Earn to Learn? Is that, is there an opportunity to, you know, start them out at DCAM and then work with them on Earn to Learn programs?
Oh, absolutely. And we, we see YEC also including potentially four-year colleges as well, and have been in conversations with a number of the different schools.
Okay, thank you.
One question.
Yes.
My question is kind of the Youth Employment Coalition. How do, how do businesses get involved with this? Because as we can tell, there's a massive shortage of staff at entry-level positions. There are businesses that have folks that are pushing retirement, the owners that are pushing retirement, that they don't know who's going to run their business after them. I, I think it'd be really interesting to, how we can get our business community more involved in this.
Yes, absolutely. And actually, one of the, we've, we've broken our framework for the YEC down into five different areas, and one of those is employer and industry engagement. So we are specifically going to be engaging with our Business Leader Equity Working Group. We're also going to try to create an employer advisory council to very specifically engage with the YEC and make sure that their views and, and inputs and, and needs are met by the coalition. And then finally, we also want to engage with local businesses and help them build the capacity and the cultural competency to be able to hire and retain and successfully employ a lot of these different populations that we're talking about. Too often, we hear stories of somebody going and trying to hire from the Marshallese community and people bouncing off a couple weeks later, right? Because there's that lack of connection. So that's a very explicit focus, and we will be actively searching, seeking out as many employers that we can get involved as possible.
Thank you. Questions? No questions? No other questions, I guess?
Well, we appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess we are adjourned.